Thank you to our first joint coffee talk with Eric Shatner, our police chief, and Mike.
McQuillan.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Chief McQuillan, Fire, Fred, our Highway Guy, myself, Scott, and Kristin. All right, so it's an open forum. Our audience is limited, but if you have any questions, please feel free to just ask away. That's the whole point behind Coffee Talk is to find out what's on your mind and what we can do. So if you want to, gentlemen, want to start with maybe a recap of your Traffic Safety Advisory Committee meeting and let folks in town know what's going on, that would rock.
All right, so the Traffic Safety Advisory Meeting that just ended was great attendance. Probably had about, what, 15, 16 residents expressing their concerns over traffic, requesting signs, lights, crosswalks. It's all stuff we understand, but everything has a financial impact, and we will be bringing that forward through our next meeting. I meet with the Select Board on Monday night with a few of the sign requests that we approved this evening. In general, I mean, we're just inundated with traffic with the 290 project, and there's no end in sight. I think once the 290 project finishes, South Street will probably be closed, so those 4,000-plus cars a day will then be diverted over to Pleasant Street for daily commuting. So it's a nonstop existing issue we have in town with traffic.
Could you go back and explain why South Street will be closed?
Well, as most people know, one of the bridges on South Street is due to be replaced. We're hoping for, in anticipation of spring of 2024, if not the fall of 2024, for a construction date, which would probably be right around the time that the 290 project finishes, and then we'll be sending our traffic again over to Pleasant Street. They are saying that once it is closed, it should only take a couple months for the bridge to be replaced.
Actually, the, is there an update for like the timing on the 290, 495 interchange?
Originally, they were supposed to be done this month. They've extended that to a date of spring '24. So whether it's March, April, maybe May, June, they have extended it. So I'd anticipate right through July 4th. I think that's probably their target, is to get open for July 4th.
Chief McQuillan, any updates from Fire that you can share to the town folk when they watch this back?
We had the open house on Saturday, which was a great event, well-attended. We had 200 people that showed up throughout the day, so even with the weather that we were anticipating was going to be poor, it was still a great showing, and we actually, things worked out. It was a rain-free day for us, so we were outside and we had a lot of demonstrations. So it went well.
Mr. Highway Guy, anything you want to share? You know what, and I want to send a shout-out to Fred and his Highway. I saw on Facebook some, I'm not going to say the words that I want to say, people or peoples, left trash on Lyman, the upper end of Lyman, I'm assuming up by...
Reddit could turn around.
Yeah, Reddit. So thank you to Highway for coming and cleaning our streets, and shame on you if you've been dumping your crap on the side of the road.
So just recently, we started into an agreement for a complete streets program, a project up in the center of town. It's going to be on the Woodward side of the center. We're going to be putting a new sidewalk in down the left side of the street to connect the existing from the library down to Central Street, and we're going to do a section from where it ended on the cemetery side up to where the Center Store is. And the last section might just be the improvements for Carter Street going up along the church that was done back in 2012 when the bicentennial came through. I'm not sure when that's actually going to take place. They just submitted the grants for it, so hopefully we'll know soon. And no real update on the South Street Bridge. The last we had done was the drill boring was done. Now I think they're in the design phase. They're starting to create the actual bridge on paper, and once they have that, then we'll be able to know when we're going to be putting that on.
Do you have any update on the pedestrian blinky lights that are constantly blinking and not like push-button activated?
Of course I do. So we're actually going to incorporate those in with the Complete Streets Program, because right now we don't have a way to protect them if we were to put them up. So that was all figured in, and the way the grant was written was that the town was going to supply them, even though we already have them. They were like points towards getting the project approved.
Any questions from our audience before we keep going? Nice. All right. Actually, I have a question from one of our residents to Chief Shatner. Can police enforce no ATVs on any of the conservation trails in town, and if so, how?
We can definitely enforce it if we can catch them. You know, like a lot of people have to realize that we have full-size cars, they're on small trails, you know, we're more than happy to set an ATV unit to go after them, but with everything, there's a huge cost endured. It's not just getting the equipment, it's the training that goes behind it, as well as outfitting the officers with the proper equipment. When I looked at this four years ago with Chief Galvin, I think it was right around $3,500 per officer to outfit them with the correct uniform for the UTV or ATV, as well as purchasing ATV or UTV in order to enforce those laws that go after them.
We have an ATV, don't we, for the town?
We do have a UTV. It's sitting right there. Definitely not outfitting, outfitted for going after people, that's for rescuing people.
All right. Chief Mike, I have a question for you. We chatted on Saturday about the trash on Linden Street left by CSX. Any update on the Jones Road? Yeah, it looks lovely. They picked up the trash, they're like, all the metal is one place. What about the other two spots in town that look like crap?
That's a good question. I did send an email to the operations manager that I had from CSX, and I have not gotten a response. I did speak to one of the crews actually at Jones Road to ask them about it, and they said that they would get on that because there wasn't eyesore. And apparently, they did Jones Road, but I'm guessing they haven't gone much else. So I'll see if I can find another crew to follow up with to see if they can pick up after themselves, but that's the only update I have, is that I've sent an email and got nothing in return.
I have other questions, but I don't want to hog. Do you have questions?
Go for it.
Okay. Kristin, can you please provide an update to the town on the facility and energy assessments?
Can you hear me? Excellent. I sure can, Peg. So we are doing a facilities assessment and building space assessment as well, and that includes an energy audit component to it. So the town went out to bid earlier this year for a consulting firm to do this survey, and we have engaged a firm. They are going to be going around to the different buildings and facilities in town that are town-owned. That includes like South Commons, Curatorial Building, Bullard House, obviously all of the main town municipal buildings, and some of the lesser-used town buildings. Basically, going through and doing an initial survey to look at systems, look at roofs, basically make a determination on whether the building should be rehabbed, what the preventative maintenance needs are, and ultimately, they do a calculation to determine if more funding should be put into the building or not, which is actually going to be really useful for us, because I think they're probably going to find in some of our older buildings, there's going to be some preventative maintenance, or deferred maintenance, rather, that may or may not make sense in light of the condition of the building to do. So then what we would look at is whether or not we want to keep or sell those buildings, what the best option is to do from there. We also, as we've talked about before, there are storage issues in town, so kind of looking at space needs as a whole, and they are going to actually catalog and inventory all of these systems in each building. So they go through and they look at the boilers, they look at the electrical systems, they look at the equipment, they get the model numbers, the years that they were put in, and then they basically make a determination of what our capital needs are going to be up to five to 10 years out. So it's a pretty comprehensive study that looks at a lot of different aspects of the building, and I would like to thank Peg Stone, Janet Lemey, Amy Grenier, Fred Cummings, our chiefs, and I know I'm forgetting people that have been helping us to complete this study. But it is a big undertaking, there's a lot of information they need to collect on each of the buildings, but I think it's going to glean, we're going to have a lot of valuable information that we can actually keep up-to-date going forward to make sure we maintain our buildings properly and to give us an idea of what those costs will be going forward.
Do you have a date when we'll have the data back and can start to plow through it and look through it?
So the preliminary surveys are going to happen in November, October and November. They should be complete by around the end of November, so I expect early next year we will be seeing the results. Yes.
I don't know if people believe it or not, but town meeting is in May, and budget season has already started.
It has.
It has to start because there's a lot of work involved.
Yes.
If you give sort of an outline of the process and are there places, because I think if people want to sort of influence the budget, think we should be spending more money on something or less money on something, now is the time to influence, a lot easier than you can on the floor of town meeting.
Very true. So I will start by saying probably in addition to the Select Board meetings that happen almost every Monday, or three Mondays out of the month that occur here at the town offices at 7:30, the FinCom will start to meet almost every Wednesday at 7:30 here at the municipal offices as well. That, both of those avenues are a great way to come, listen to what's going on, make your voices heard. Also, you know, if you don't want to be so public about it, you're welcome to reach out to us by email, phone, any way that you would like. But basically, we have kicked off the FY25 budget season, believe it or not. This involves putting out budgets, capital improvement plans, performance evaluations for employees, we can set COLAs going forward. It's quite an extensive process that literally starts in September and goes all the way through town meeting in May. It also includes basically the annual town report that gets done in the spring, and it includes opening the warrant in February, closing it in March, and going through all of those articles that need to be on the town meeting warrant, which of course includes the budget and the capital plan. It looks like the capital committee is going to be meeting Thursday night. That seems so far to be the best night. I don't know exactly what the final time is going to be on that, but you can check out mytown.gov and go to the Berlin tab, and you get a list of all of our meetings and when they are starting and where they're located.
Thank you. Chiefs, and Brett too, the, hiring is not easy in today's environment. I know we've had some turnover. What are the like staffing levels and what is sort of being done to get to full staffing in each of the departments?
Yeah, so staffing levels have been subpar. We're operating at 50%. Right now, soon to be 60, and the next few weeks we'll be at the 70. We will have two candidates for you Monday night for conditional offers. Those both are not academy-trained people. We're actually fortunate enough to get one resident on the list. So Kristin will be bringing them forward, or bringing their names forward Monday night. They're subsequently set up for physicals and psych exams, and hopefully, we can get them in the academy for November 27th. If not, we're looking at another three-month delay. But I remind you, from start to finish, the day they start the academy, we're looking at nine months to get them on the road. So it's not something that's going to be instantaneous, but you know, definitely looking forward to bringing staffing levels back up and obviously looking into the future. A lot of people got to realize the next 48 months to 60 months, 50% of law enforcement officers are eligible for retirement. Back in 96, like when I got hired, I got hired through a federal grant, and we're all hitting our 32-year mark, 30-year mark, 28-year mark, so we're going to have a mass exodus the next four to five years of all law enforcement, that's across the country. That's just not Massachusetts, that's across the country. So yeah, there's a lot of work that has to be done over the next few years, planning, being ahead of the game, and make sure our staffing levels get up there. As we know, we're, through police reform, we're now a peace officer standards and training state where we're all licensed. This is the last year to get through all officers working to be fully licensed, which then required in the past, we had to do 40 hours of training a year. Now I'm budgeting at 72 hours a year so we can keep up with all the standards of the state. And my meeting this afternoon was with our policy and procedures company called Lexi Bowl, and we're going to see a significant increase in our subscription to our policy and procedures, double if not triple what we're paying today in order to be, become an accredited police department, which is our goal for June of '25, is to be a fully-accredited police department. Like I said, we're underway with that, getting our policy and procedures up to standards, but with that comes a large cost. You know, I say it's a large cost is, you know, we have $118,000 budget, and we're probably going to be looking at 10% of that just for accreditation, going to accreditation, never mind our payroll, then we have to keep it updated. Unfortunately, it doesn't matter if you're a 200-person department or a two-person department, requires basically one full-time person to constantly monitor, update, change, to stay up-to-date with all policy and procedures across the Commonwealth. Like I went in today, and there was a huge dump on September 28th that I did not see of policy updates that need to be out there, but we're working on that, and you know, it's a, I think definitely like we've asked for this, Mass Chief started asking in 2013 for, to be a post-state. Of course, it wasn't a popular agenda back in 2013 until the George Floyd incident, and then the state fast-tracked it, which is causing a lot of confusion. It's, it's not, you know, they just posted their lists, and it was had a, I think, as 5% or 6% inaccuracy in their postings, which was unfair to, you know, hundreds of law enforcement officers across the state. So I think once we get on track, I think people will be more attracted to the job in the future, once we have a solid base of what we're doing, what we expect, and where we're going. It's definitely going to make us all professional across the board, every department in the Commonwealth, but you know, for the time being, I think there's a lot of negative rhetoric broadcast across the news media and social media, just until we can finally get to that final step. But like I said, you know, we've got a lot of plans the next few years to hopefully curb the mass exodus that we're looking at, you know, four to five years from now. You know, because I mean, basically, that's 40% of our department that will be in that, in that category. So we're definitely, definitely going to pay attention to that and keep our recruiting up.
If I could add on to that, if you don't mind too, on the personnel. One of the things I've been asked to do by both the FinCom and the Personnel Committee is to put together a five-year staffing plan, so similar to what you do with a capital plan, but obviously on the employee side. I think this town in the past five years has experienced a tremendous amount of growth, and some of the departments in terms of their projects, workload, level of call volumes, we need to be able to have the staffing to keep up with the volume of work and calls that are coming in. So it's, it's public safety, as Chief just mentioned, they're really taking a hit right now on the police side, but also the Highway Department. There are a number of other areas where we really are struggling to keep up on the staffing side, just to basically maintain basic levels of services. So I'm sort of dubbed the FY25 budget the year of staffing. I think the FY26 budget is going to be sort of a capital budget, because we'll have the facility study done, and we'll be having to look at some of the deferred maintenance that we've done, or we have in some of the buildings, but it is certainly something that's very much on my radar, and I will be working with the department heads. In fact, they don't all know this yet, but I'm meeting with them next week, and we will be discussing this staffing plan that we'll be putting together.
So staffing in Fire Department, we're down from where I would like to see us. We're actively recruiting, trying to bring people on. One of the issues that I think we're running into is trying to do background checks and get that done utilizing the Police Department, because their priority is obviously, you know, trying to get their full-time members taken care of. You know, we're looking at the same issues of bringing people on and bringing them into the department, and they're probably, you know, eight months to a year before they're going to be certified and able to actually start, you know, benefiting us on the, on being able to be counted on to be part of the ambulance crew or the initial fire crew going out the door. You know, call volume is kind of up, the severity of the calls are up, and we're, yeah, and this is the same as the police across the country. It's the volunteer and call departments aren't, the interest isn't there anymore, so it's trying to recruit people to bring in. And then the, if you will, the ill effect to that is also for full-time departments, you don't have as many people, because that used to be what fed the full-time departments, was the call and volunteers. So we're actively trying to figure out new ways to recruit and retain our employees, so that's going to be something, I think, for the next couple of years, that's going to be at the forefront for us to look at, to come up with different ways of attracting people to come in and to be involved.
And then if I understand it, for both Police and Fire, the state regulations now is that a part-time person really needs to have the exact same level of training, the number of hours, and other type as a full-time person at this point, correct?
Yes, the certifications are the same for being an EMT or a firefighter. It's the same hours, it's the same classes, there's, there's no difference. And that's my understanding for the Police Department as well.
Yeah.
But yeah, it's, the levels, our trainings are the same, my mandates for my staff, whether they are call firefighters, part-time firefighters, which I'm looking at trying to get more to fill some of our vacancies, but there's a shortage out there of them. And full-time firefighters, their training every month to keep their credentials up is the same, they're all taking the same training, and they're in here every month on the same nights to take the same trainings together.
Right, so those part-time positions aren't necessarily as appealing as they used to be, because if you need to do all the same training, you might as well work a full-time job.
Correct.
Instead of just doing that as a, as a side thing.
Yes, and I'm looking at the, the new ones that I'm trying to get on the department that are 18 or 19-years-old, that are just coming out of high school and stuff. In full transparency, I'm looking at having them for about three to five years before I'm going to lose them to a full-time department, just because most of them coming in seem to be that this is something that they want to make a career out of, they're excited about coming on, but I know, you know, just from, you know, the way it works, that excitement will turn into a full-time job offer from somebody else, because all of the other departments have openings, you know, and eventually, that's where they'll go.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Brett, how are we doing in Highway with staffing?
All right, so our staffing, we were just had one guy short. I left in August. Right now, I'm in the process of reaching out to set up interviews for next week. We have two definite candidates, one possible. And the position when Brendan had started was, it was split 50/50 between like a custodian and then as the 50% Highway. We've since changed it to be 100% within the buildings, because it just got to the point where the buildings are over 20-years-old, even the municipal center, and it just got to the point where, you know, things aren't being upkept the way they should be, and I just couldn't like jump up and leave a job to come down here to, you know, to change a light bulb real quick or anything like that, because it stops work on the highway. So I spoke with Kristin, and we, we came to terms to put a person here full-time, just to help maintain the buildings and everything. As much as I wanted the full-time guy on the highway, this was more a priority right now to help us out. So hopefully, in the next couple of weeks, you know, we'll have an offer for the Select Board.
I always have a question, that's a silly question, that I always have a question. So, over the weekend, the drone was up in the back. Have you used the drone? I noticed that there were a couple incidents over the weekend where you had to go find someone on Piska, so could you let us tell everybody about the drone and how awesome it is?
All right, so the incident you're talking about on Piska, fortunately, the Fire Department in the town has a hiker that is much faster than a drone that went 1.24 miles in and out in less than 45 minutes, which would be the gentleman in the lime green to the left of us, along with one of the firefighters, Michelle, that, or avid hikers. It was raining, so there was a delay in us deploying the drone, but earlier in the week, there was a missing 23-year-old autistic person from Clinton that we had records of finding in conservation areas. So we spent five or six hours, Police and Fire, flying the drones over Pleasant Street, the Lester Ross Dam area down there, as well as the Suasko, covered the Suasko, just to eliminate areas of concern that we had. Fortunately, the person was located the next morning in Marlboro behind Price Dropper, safe and well, but had been missing for 48 hours. But yeah, yeah, we have, we have been up there and, and getting used to it, and there's a lot to learn. We realized how powerful the cameras are, and they're definitely to our advantage. So yeah, it was a great, turned out to be a training exercise, which was good for everybody, but yeah, we're just looking forward to setting it up more. Yeah, so the infrared does multiple, multiple colors, which we got to train with. You know, like we learned that we can't use red and white over water, because it turns the water red. But you know, we definitely used the white a lot, and it worked out great. We thought we had a, a hit, and it turned out to be a frog. At 167 feet, we were able to zoom right in on the, on the frog and realize that the heat was coming from a little frog sitting on a lily pad.
And I was just going to follow up on that with the drone use on Saturday night. I think, you know, obviously, kudos to Lieutenant Cummings and firefighter DeVeau who made it up there so quickly. I have no doubt that that drone would have been deployed, and the heat signatures, they would have been able to pinpoint exactly where that person was, but to, just to reiterate what Chief Shatner said, it was raining that night, and just because we had found the hiker, instead of putting the drones out and, you know, risking damaging them, that was why the decision was made not to deploy them. But if we hadn't found that hiker, we would have deployed those assets and taken that risk just to find that person, but as, as he had stated, the capabilities and what you can see with that camera is incredible.
So, either Chief Shatner or Kristin, is there any update from Congressman Trehan's office on the funding for the radio project?
Yes, there is. Good news. So we hope to hear in December, or we will hear in December. It is, made it through all of the hoops so far, so Peg is referring to a $400,000 grant, or actually, it's sort of like a federal earmark that we requested through Lori Trehan's office through her community funding program, and it would be the first time that Berlin ever received funding through her office before. It's a very exciting project to update our radios, to do the Phase 3, which would be adding another tower, would add a huge amount of coverage to have that third site where we could have, you know, additional coverage throughout town. So I did actually speak with her Regional Chief of Staff about two weeks ago. Everything is moving as it should. They are cautiously optimistic was the words that were used, so we're really hopeful that it will go through, but we will know shortly. Believe it or not, December is right around the corner.
And to be clear, the coverage is not necessarily like cellphone coverage, this is for our emergency broadcasts and our Police and Fire to have... is for our emergency broadcasts and our police and fire to have better coverage and better communication during emergencies.
Yes, that's correct.
Is there anyone in the audience who wants to ask any questions? If not, I think we might be done. I want to thank all the department heads, the chiefs, you know, Kristin, for coming out here tonight, the people who are here tonight, and those people who are watching on the phone, or on the phone, on the TV, you know, they're all about the same. Thank you very much and we'll see you soon.